Good evening, everyone. It is October 7th, Tuesday at 6:30. This is the time for our monthly committee meeting. I do call this meeting to order. First up, we have a few presentations. Dr. Messinger, do you want to introduce them?
Absolutely. Megan Allman's here for Viking Foundation. She is the president and she's going to give us a little update. I think they're curious a little bit about how summer camps have gone, but we have some other stuff coming up that you can come up and talk about right there. Megan, if you hit the, make sure the green light is on there. Just hit that. There you go.
There we go. Alright, I think we're good now. Thank you, everyone, for giving me this chance to speak to you guys tonight. Like Gary said, I am Megan Allman. I am the president of the Northern Lebanon Viking Foundation. It's actually a little weird for me because you guys don't know this, or some of you don't know this, we sit in your seats for our meetings when you guys aren't here. So I'm actually used to sitting over there and running a meeting. So some of you may also know me as Coach Allman. I am an assistant cross-country coach as well. I've coached some of your kids and currently coached some of your kids. So, and I'm also an alumni of Northern Lebanon as well and a community member. So I know some of you are familiar with the Viking Foundation, but I just wanted to take a few minutes to explain what we do, who we are, and how you can get involved if you are interested in that. So the Viking Foundation is the nonprofit fundraising arm of Northern Lebanon. So we are a 501(c)(3). That means that people can give us tax exempt donations. We were founded about 30 years ago to serve that function for the school. Our board consists of teachers, past and present, community members, parents, anyone, Troy sits on our board. We appreciate you guys loaning him to us. So basically, our goal is to try to raise money for the school in different ways. So where does that money go? We distribute it in a few ways. Our biggest program, and one that we've been really proud of for the last almost 30 years, I think, is our senior scholarships. So we provide scholarships to graduating seniors based on the community service that they've performed over the four years of their high school career. So to date, we've given over $250,000 to graduating seniors. Typically, those are at least $1,000. Last year, I believe, we had 12 recipients at, or 11 recipients at $1,200. So we give a lot of money to graduating seniors to really help support them as they head out into their next venue. Most of that is college. We did start to do a technical student grant as well. So we've had a few students who were going to technical or trade schools, and we were able to provide them some money as well. We also offer teacher grants. So any teacher can come and apply for a grant either for their classroom or for extracurricular activities. Some of our recent funding, we've helped fund a crochet camp here in the elementary school, which was a really great activity, separate from the summer camps that I'm going to talk about in a second. So this was an after-school project. A few teachers had started and wanted to get students involved. We also recently funded audiobooks for the elementary library. So they wanted to have another way to engage students in reading, so we were able to support that. Our newest initiative that we started three years ago was to help support summer camps for incoming 7th and 8th graders. So this is a project that we co-sponsor with the district. District pays teacher salaries, but basically, teachers can submit proposals, and then they are completely free for students to attend. So it's several mornings a week over the summer. We've done theater camps, a craft camp, a STEM camp. I think this year, there was a couple different art camps, a nature art camp, and extreme sculpture camp, which I'm actually really bummed I didn't get to see what they were making. We had a tennis camp. So any teacher is able to apply for this. This is a program we'd really like to continue to expand. As I said, right now, it's incoming 7th and 8th graders, but we're hoping with a little more funding, maybe we can start to let more teachers bring in students. So that's one of our big things. The other thing that we do is we're very proactive in involving NL students in our projects. So for our golf tournament in the spring, our tech ed students engrave the mugs that we give out as our giveaway in our gift bags. We also have our tech ed students print the T-shirts for our 5K, which I'll be talking about in a second. They engrave the awards that we give out, and we actually have the cross-country team help us on race day as well. So we're very interested in getting students involved at every level, and we've been trying to kind of grow our presence and show people, hey, we're here. We're raising money, and we want to really be involved. So speaking of being involved, a couple different ways. One, we are always taking donations. We are always happy to take your money. If you know anyone or any business that would like to donate, they can reach out to me directly, or they can reach out to any of our officers, which include Lauren Bruce and Wendy Ruden. So we are happy to take any and all donations. Our big event coming up in a month is our Vikes and Vets 5K, which is an event that we co-sponsor with the cross-country team, because quite frankly, we couldn't put it on without all those students running around and helping us. This is a really great event. It's going to be our third year. It's a great opportunity for us to show off the campus. So last year, we expanded the race route so that we start at the high school, we come over to the elementary school, they loop around the building, we come back to the high school, they finish in the stadium. We get to show off our wonderful field house with, if I'm being honest, the best bathrooms any 5K anywhere in the area has. I try to like tell people, I'm like, no, no, trust me. Best bathrooms you're going to get in a 5K. So we show all that off. But it's open to runners, it's open to walkers, and then we have a fun run for kids 12 and under as well. So please consider coming out. I know Amy Hoke has posted all the information on the school's website, so if you're interested in that, we would love to have you on race day. And then our other big event in the spring, we do a golf tournament. This is our, this year will be our 27th annual Jim Northridge Memorial Tournament at Pine Meadows Golf Course. So that takes place in June. We would also love to have you as a foursome or just come out and hang out with us. You can volunteer. And that is my last pitch, is that we are currently accepting new board members. So if it's something that you're interested in, please see me, or you can get in touch with Gary, and he can send you in my direction. But yeah, so that's, those are the things we've been up to. Do you guys have any questions? I know I just like rapid fired at you.
I guess not. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Guys, important part of what we do. Appreciate it. Okay, our second presentation tonight, we'd like to welcome Director Benton. And he's going to talk to us a little bit about CTC. You haven't had a chance to meet him yet. You're working about two months, three months from about a year here with us and doing some fantastic things. And you can give us an update and tell us a little bit about what's going on over there?
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak in front of you. I also have my assistant, Marilyn Lathop, that's here today that we'll be able to help answer questions to if you have anything. The presentation I have in front of you that you can look at, this is our six options to our feasibility study. We're looking to finalize our feasibility study at the JOC meeting on the 21st of October. So this has been a long process. I know Dave has been involved with this too, given him updates, but I wanted to take the opportunity to explain it to all board members in person and have them ask questions at the end. So what you're looking at, the feasibility study is coming out with six different options. What is, what we need to move forward for the future for career and technical education. What you see here is option A. This is the current five-wing layout in light blue. If you see the dark navy blue, those would be new added spaces onto the building. So every option, as we move through here, our current space is around 166,000 square feet. We are looking to expand to about 200, 205,000 square feet. Alright, so it's roughly 50,000 square feet that we're looking to add. So option A deals with mechanicals, deals with lighting, windows, adding on those navy blue spaces there, but keeping pretty much the same footprint of the building. It also will correct the hallway. How many people have been to the CTC and know about the hallway? The ramp that goes up, that is out of ADA compliance. So whenever you do anything, you have to bring everything back into ADA compliance. So that's what this option A will take care of.
It's a great hallway for sled riding, though.
Correct. Correct. If anybody wants to come, I'll give you a walk, and you can get your steps in and get your heart rate elevated as you walk back up the hill. So option B, so we're taking the same 200 and some thousand square foot. We then moved wing A and B and moved it into a 45 and connected on to wing C. So we're also looking to narrow the footprint of the building for future costs dealing with roof, the cost of a roof. Okay? And I'll go over those costs of the roof at the end. I do have a little bit of a sheet on which each of these options will cost roughly right now. So this is at a 45-degree angle. Wing A and B will be eliminated. It will be demolished. That actually takes away that hill ramp hallway, and everything will be on one floor then. Okay? Option C is the same design, just put into a 90 versus a 45. Okay? Still same square footage, so we're looking at apples to apples with everything. Option D, this is splitting this wing A and B into another building. It's a two-building concept. Just another idea for everyone to look at. Okay? Option E, this is shrinking the footprint even more. This will actually have, this will eliminate wing C and then rebuilding it. And where wing C is right there in the center, it actually goes to two-story. So we're able to then minimize the roof space, and we'll actually have a two-story building there. Okay? And option F, this is a, the last option here is, this is a brand-new building that would be constructed on-site, and then after the end, all five wings would be demolished. This building would be two stories. Okay? With that, so we're still minimizing the footprint of the roof for future costs down the road with dealing with the roof. I can tell you this. So in all these options, A through E, you're looking at a construction time somewhere between 30 to 40 months. There'll be loss of education. Whenever you do a renovation, you try to put students into a trailer, mobilized trailer. We just can't put a welding lab, precision machining, auto body, automotive into a trailer. One's a power and space. So they will get their theory portion. They just won't get their hands-on portion. So the workforce development process through options A through E will be affected. Okay? The one nice thing about option F, that can be, that building can be erected while we still educate students, and then everything would be transferred over the summer. That would have very minimal adverse on the educational process to the students. So if you think about that, even in a high school situation, if you're doing stuff to your high school that you guys just went through, we only have them for two years. So it's a junior, senior. And if it's 12 months, depends on where that 12 months to be able to, in that area that needs to be demoed and reconstructed, that could hurt somebody's entire educational process at the CTC. So just something to think about. Okay? The last sheet is the sheet that everyone wants to know. If we can go to the last sheet, please, the next slide. These are the costs. Is there any way you can move the screen? I think you have some cost figures. Thank you. So option A, just the baseline cost just for mechanicals and electric and windows is roughly 44 million. The new added space, you're looking at 23 million. Hard costs are 61. Contingency costs is roughly around 16 million. So option A, you're looking at roughly at $80 million. Option B, C, and D, it's all the same square footage. You have hard costs there of 71 million. The contingency cost is around 16.5 million, and the overall cost there is roughly around $90 million. So in those contingency costs, that is also factoring in the demolition piece of removing wings A and B from the property and fixing that up. Option E is where we go two-story. It is actually running you another 5 million, and that's basically for stairwells and elevators to go up. So that's going to have an overall projected cost around 95 million. The thing that we do have sealed on this sheet is projected roof costs. If you look at option A, that roof will need to be completely replaced within the next eight to 10 years. That's going to be another $5.5 million at today's prices. Okay? When we're scaling down, when I talk about scaling down the footprint, you can see the cost savings just in the roof. 3.8 for options B through D, and then E has the smallest footprint of a roof. You're looking at 2.9 million for a roof that will still need in that eight to 10 window of projection there. So we're taking all that into consideration. The last option F, if you look at that across, it has the largest contingency cost because the whole building needs to be come down, and that's at 117 million. And if you look at the roof, there's no figures there because you're good for 25, 30 years on a roof. Okay? So that's how, what we're looking at, what our thinking is. The biggest thing, I went to Beards and Hoffman, the architects on these designs, especially starting with B through F. Our school is known for its hill. We joke about it. I think about students. I think there are students that are not even applying to come to our school because they can't navigate that hill. There might be a deficiency, a physical deficiency, and that's not fair to not be able to offer career and tech ed to all students. So I said, I want designs where that hill is eliminated. So I want all students to have the ability to apply to our school and not be afraid to go because of that hill and their physical limitations. So I'm going to open it up. Does anybody have any questions or comments or concerns?
I think before they ask questions, I just want to fill in a few gaps. First of all, I think the CTC every year, there's a lot of kids that can't get in. And, you know, in terms of being able to meet more kids' needs, you know, there's certainly possibilities here. But the other component that, I mean, those numbers are great, but I think just to explain to the board where we are in terms of those numbers. Right now, we are currently looking at the articles that were made when all the districts and the county came together, the six districts, to start the CTC. Those were then revised in the 80s, and then they were revised again in the 90s. The ones that were done in the 90s don't take a whole lot of revision. The ones that were done in the nineties don't take a whole lot of revision at this point. However, one of the sticking points for some of the, particularly two of our larger districts, is the way that a bond payment would be calculated. And so, those numbers don't really mean anything to us as a district yet until, one, we've determined how we're going to rewrite the articles to, to divide up the costs of a bond. And then, two, what the financing, what the, you remember when we did our projects, you get those colorful sheets where they break down how much money each year, you know, with the bond payments. All of that will be done. As a matter of fact, we're going to see a couple of them hopefully by Thursday. And we have to come back to business managers, and then they have to present to boards. And boards need to take a look at that. And let's just, I'm going to throw a number out. Let's just hypothetically say we have to come up with one-point-three million dollars a year as our portion of that bond. We then need to talk about how do we go from where we are as a board to that amount of money? Because that's not going to happen overnight. So, you know, those are all questions that we don't have exact information on yet. But will be coming over the next few months, both to the JOC members and also to school boards. Leanne will be helping with some of that presentation. So, those are, those are big things we have to discuss. But in terms of operations of the CTC, what are the advantages, disadvantages, or any questions about the presentation, fire away.
What's your, what's your preferred recommendation of the options? I, I hear you saying that A is sort of disfavored. Is that fair?
There, there's two that I would definitely rule out. One is D, the management of the split buildings.
Okay.
Okay? The two split buildings, just, it's a concept, just the, the management with just administration and dealing with kids. I don't want to deal with a split building. I think option A is the longest renovation piece, will hold up the educational process the most. That's what I'm really concerned about with there. So, I'm not saying it's, it's out, but it's not the top.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Do any of these options increase student capacity?
Yes, it does. Yes, all, all the options increase the student capacity. So, I believe right now you're sitting, depending on the program, one to four students. This will, this will increase the student capacity in programs from two to five, depending on the program. Increase numbers.
Has there, do we, I don't know if you have an answer to this question or not, but is, is there a projected timeline as far as like start, starting of the renovation?
So...
Or construction, whichever option you end up choosing?
Correct. So, if we had a crystal ball and everything was smooth...
It will be.
Yeah.
With Gary's guidance, yes, it will.
Dr. Reese is her manager.
He's over there, right there. He'll, he'll be your project manager.
Uh-huh. So, we get the articles taken care of, we, and we have an authority vote, JOC, and then we come to you all with a vote on this. After you would agree to some type of a bond, then there's a twelve-month process of design. Just sitting, these are concepts, these are not designs.
Right, okay.
Okay? So, you have a, and that is at the shortest amount of time. So, that design could go from twelve months to eighteen months. But if we're thinking crystal ball, everything's smooth, I think the earliest that you stick a shovel in the ground to break ground is probably sometime spring of twenty-seven. That would be the earliest.
Best-case scenario.
Yes.
Thank you. We won't hold you to that.
So then, so, I'm sorry, sorry to keep hogging. But so then, district impact, the earliest would be twenty-twenty-seven budget?
So, there will be a phase in to that. So, there's initial design phase to start off. I think it's probably after that, correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, probably twenty-four months after that till it's a full bond implement.
It varies. You'll work it out, they'll work it out as they, as, when they see the big chunks are going to be due, they'll work out the, the phasing. So, I don't know that we can predict based off of hours. The Spartan has way more experience with that than I do, but...
They work with Brad Remming as well. And I know that with us, he allowed us to phase in. And I said, I want like bigger payments in two, three years because I knew we would get there with the tax rate. So, they, I'm sure Brad will be just as flexible with their bond and do what he thinks is best for all the school districts, you know, to be able to accept that on, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming with those dollar amounts, they're going to have to do multiple bonds, just like we did. So, it'll increase gradually as they need more money throughout the construction project.
And I'll be truthful, I, this is not a one-year thing. Like, if, if we're going to need an approximate number to talk about in this budget in order to get to down the road. Because we're not going to have the ability to increase the, whatever that, those bond payments are that fast, I don't think.
We should start building in now.
And neither will any other district.
Yes. But we are looking at everything that I'm projecting out. It will be on a thirty-year bond, okay?
Anything else?
So, that's a very good question, thank you for that. There is, there is, I have thought about that, but there's some things legality-wise we have to worry about. One is the safety and security of our students. And if we partner all this, all the adults that may be coming contact, they have to have clearances. So, that is right there, usually the number-one hindrance. So, there's a lot out there to look at, starting to brainstorm what that may look like. So, I don't have a definite answer, but those are some of the, the safety and security piece is the number-one issue that will be addressed first, okay?
It's been my experience that all welders that have applied for jobs in schools have very clean clearances.
Correct.
No, incorrect. All right, well Chuck, I appreciate you coming and, and giving us an update. And I'm sure you'll be back here with, with further information later. But, but thank you. I know that you know Director Moore is online tonight and, and Director Klein. But nice that you could come out and talk. You're welcome to stay, hang out and say hi, but you're also welcome to leave. And Megan, you are too. All right.
I, I greatly appreciate your time and thank you. It's nice meeting you all.
Thank you.
And I look forward to future meetings with you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the work you do too, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
In our final presentation tonight, we have lined up three times for elementary to come and talk to the board and three times for secondary to be here as well. Mr. Humbert is going to talk a little bit about what they've been doing these first couple of weeks. It's, it's really an expansion of some things we talked about last year. But we're in probably the best position I've seen in terms of gathering baseline data and then what they're, and the conversations they're having. So, I'm going to let him talk about that a little bit and just kind of, we, we had that half a day where you were able to grade level me. And just talk about what you've been going through these past couple of weeks to set the stage for this year. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thanks for having me this evening. It's been a year since I briefed you on some of the work we've done. And we're excited to share this work with you. But as you can tell, tonight's going to focus on just one of the mechanisms that we have in place for how to promote that every student gets what they need and reaches their potential. So, we focused a lot this, this summer and beginning this year on data meetings. And one of the, the things I want you to think about is, a lot of times, we need to move past just data collection and getting to not just seeing numbers, but what do the numbers, what is the story that the numbers tell us? And how is that going to affect our students reaching their potential? And then obviously, our teachers are taking that story of the numbers and implementing it into instruction. So, the first thing I'm going to share with you is, we have two different types of meetings that we're going to present. The first one is grade-level meetings that we do. And as Gary just mentioned to us, we took that half-day that we just recently had and had grade-level meetings. And these focus around something called benchmark data. I'll, the next slide goes into benchmark data, but let me just, so, when we think about benchmark data, we're really talking about a systematic analysis process that we go into. And the questions we're asking ourselves are listed there. Not quite sure in the translation how we got one, 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 but it's okay. Think of it as one, two, three. So, we ask ourselves, as students are mastering those state standards, how do those results compare to our data in the past? Are we growing, are we not? Are the changes that we made, are they effective, are they not effective? What do we need to do differently? And then finally, are there specific student groups that are exceeding or struggling as we go through? So, there's, I'll just give you the easy one that's out there that everyone believes in. And I'm putting believes in quotes there, is that females are not as good in math. Our data does not, does not even substantiate that. Our girls are just as good in math as they are to their counter. So, that's one of the myths that out, that's out there. But we take those specific student groups and go, where are they with that? So, that's just a small example of how we use that to do that. So, every, if we flip to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about benchmark data. So, it's used to measure where they are on proficiency. And it's typically measured three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. And they're put on our pacing calendar and our scope and sequence charts about when we do that. But it's really about the standards or, as we get into the upper grade levels of grades three, four, five, and six, the eligible content that we have. And we're measuring where our students are on that trajectory towards proficiency. And then we take that information and go and say, okay, now, where are we? Do we need to do something with that? What do the numbers tell us? What is that story that we have? Does that mean we need to focus more on geometry and math? Because we're seeing that we need some assistance in that. Or are we at the place of, we're seeing some issues in our phonics program and we want to address that? But it's the story that we get with that, that we want to do and take that to make some changes and do that. And we had some really great conversations. Each grade level was a little bit different as we went through this process this fall. This is not the same process that we used last year. This is a new process. It's our next level up. It's kind of, we took another step in terms of how we're doing this. So, our next slide, I just want to show you some of the data that we use. These are snippets from different places. So, you have ELA examples that are up there that break it down from, are we looking at literature text, informational text, key ideas, details, text-dependent analysis, which is really great if you notice those numbers go from fifty-five into the eighties there. So, that's across time. So, those are great numbers that you're seeing with that. You can see on the right side at the top, there's some math numbers there. Then you have some bar graphs at the bottom, which is really teasing out where are we? So, these are some of the examples of things that we have conversations around. And how do we delve into how we're providing instruction and helping students maximize their potential with that? So, I'll stop there. That's lens number one. That is benchmark data using grade-level me, meetings to delve into that systematic process. Any questions on that part of it? All right, part, oh, go ahead.
So, is that data collected, as you collect it from each student, and then you put it all together and look at the picture across the grade?
That is correct. And that is where we're using a, a new software program. Linkit came into play. We were using Ed Insight last year. We made a switch to a different program. So, that has come with a learning curve as well. So, we added some, you know, it was too easy just to roll it over and do it. So, we added some challenge to that and added Linkit. But what Linkit does is puts it together a lot easier and more systematic. And we're not playing games with a lot of Excel sheets. Like, Linkit prepares that for us and makes it a little more automatic in our process. So, we can have more about the conversation and less on how do we make those graphs and things of that nature. So, a lot more efficiency in terms of that as well.
So, I'm sorry, what are the, what are the four columns with the percentages represent?
They are years.
Years, okay.
So, the, that example that I, I chose is, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. I'm off a year somewhere in there. But each one is a, a school year there, and that's a kind of end-of-year synopsis.
And those are our actual?
Those are our actual numbers. Yes, the, these are based on tests. Like, the ones that are up there on the screen right now, two of them are from PSSA results. One is from our in-house assessments, what we call our SWOT assessments, school-wide assessment team assessments. And then, then there is also diagnostic data, which I didn't even want to delve into diagnostics tonight because I, I was told to keep this to five minutes. You did say five minutes, sir. With that, any other questions on lens one? All right, we'll go to lens two. So, we hold individual data meetings. And the, what we do with this one is, we go into really about how do we small, form small groups? So, if we have a group of students in teacher A's classroom and they are, you know, the, the story that's being told is that, oh, they're in fourth grade, but they show some needs in phonics. But it's like these four or five kids that, that need some help in phonics. So, we try and get them into a group and have a discussion with the teacher about, okay, in your classroom, the phonics instruction. Now, one of our goals that we always put out there, using my example of the fourth-grade students, is we want students by third grade to be able to have learned to read. And then we start the transition of reading to learn after third grade. But in fourth grade, if you're still having some phonics issues, you have some foundational reading skill issues that we need to address. So, this is where we start getting into these small groups and going, how are we going to help those students reach their potential? So, we start doing that. We also, this is where our reading specialists kick in and they start to help. And we go, okay, this one's a little bit more and this is going to be higher. So, we're going to bring these to our reading specialists as opposed to the classroom teacher. And unfortunately, if we see that the, the deficit is getting wider and wider, you know, and the discrepancy exists there, then we may have to head for a special education referral and headed to testing in terms of special education and what needs and student services we need to put into place for them. The bottom line to our individual is, this is where a teacher has a huge voice in advocating for students in terms of, I believe that I can get this, this student where I need to get them. This one I'm a little concerned about, I'm going to need some help with this. So, they advocate for their students in these meetings. And this is where a lot of teacher passion comes out. It is fantastic to see, you know. This is really where our teachers shine, is in these meetings because they know their students. They know what their, what their ability is and how far they can take that child. And they're not afraid to say, I need a little more help here, or I got this with that one. And then if we flip to the next one, this is an example of Linkit. My technical support failed me for a second. So, this is an example of Linkit. So, this is an example of putting things together. So, each column, each row, let's say, each row represents a student. Each column represents a different part of this. So, this is vital in our individual. So, we have a composite score that kind of takes all the assessments, puts it together, gives us a composite of what a student is doing. But then you can see in this example, like, students are tested on pseudo-word fluency. And they are also done on word recognition fluency, passage-reading fluency. We also have, you know, when we get down to our kindergarten, letter naming, letter-sound fluency. So, we put this all together. And then it tells, it gives us a good synopsis of where a student is performing. And then, again, this is where a teacher's passion really kicks in and they advocate for a student. And we're able to design instruction that meets student potential.
I, I'm going to chime in here. This, along with the other ones you mentioned, and I'll include phoneme segmentation in there, pseudo-words are make-believe words, where you're just putting the sounds together to make a word. to make a word, but they don't have any meaning. So they can't cheat by knowing, for instance, if they know the word sat, they can't cheat by just being able to say sat because you know that word. You actually have to put the sounds together in your head. This information across the board is what allows us to pinpoint exactly where kids are struggling and what they need intervention on. Hopefully, the area they're struggling in is something that is actually taught in that grade level. And through the course of the year, they will be able to grow. They've already put in place progress, I don't know if you can talk about this, but we had a conversation today, and they've already talked, they already have started progress monitoring, you said, this week?
This week is our first round of progress.
Okay, so a kid who is below level is already now being monitored to see if they are growing through the intervention that they're receiving in the classroom or through the instruction that they're receiving in the classroom. If that child is below grade level, we can go back to the previous year and we can give assessments to determine exactly... So if a child is in second grade and is not reading fluently, we can go back and look at pseudo-words and say, okay, can they decode a consonant-vowel consonant pattern? If they can do that, then we're good and we know where to focus on. We're going to focus on our fluency. If they can't do that, then we got to go back to letter sounds and make sure that they know their letter sounds and be able to go from that standpoint. It also allows us to pinpoint in each grade level, what are the skills that they are focusing on? Because I don't care if they can read a passage fluently in kindergarten. What I do care about is that they come out of kindergarten with their letter sounds and hopefully have started to delve into the world of pseudo-word decoding. So it all works together and that corresponds to the curriculum that they're writing, where the important question is, what do I want my students to learn? And that's why we've changed that format to simplify it. In kindergarten, I want my students to learn the sounds that correspond with those letters. Period, end of story. Why do I want them to learn it? Because it's a foundational skill toward being able to read fluently. And how will I know? I'll know because we give data now. We get data now that tells me if they've mastered that. So that's how all of those pieces fit together. And I'm sorry if I stole your thunder.
You did not.
Okay, go ahead.
You went far deeper than I was going to.
Well, I'm passionate about it.
I understand. I joked about, do we need a filibuster here to stop us from talking? Because between you and I, we could go a long time on this. So in conclusion, I'm just going to wrap this up. Two types of data meetings that we're implementing, you know, looking at systematic growth and student growth. Obviously, we have grown a lot in terms of data, but now we want to go from data collection to data utilization and getting that story and meeting all of our students and getting them to their potential. So that's what I have for you. And hopefully, I'll get invited back sooner and we can share some more discussions about this. But do you have any questions for me?
Is it too soon to ask what story the data is telling us?
Well, I mean, there are some stories. So like, one of the things that came out is we have a couple of grade levels, like, reading fluently is a concern right now. So we were putting some measures into place in those grade levels. And when we reassess our next major assessment window is in November, I'm hoping that we're going to see a lot of growth based on the steps that we took, like, in terms of getting students to meet those challenges that we have on. Obviously, kindergarten, as Gary said, letter names, letter sounds, we're going to see a lot of growth in that. We see a lot of growth in our first grade, particularly in word recognition fluency. That's a great area for them where they start to grow a lot with that. So each grade level has a little bit of piece of the puzzle. And as long as we get those focus areas moving, and then obviously, we started progress monitoring. So now we're going to get more data going. Are we in the right direction? Is our trajectory in an upward direction of acceleration?
So this sounds very exciting at this level. I think we're all pretty jazzed about what you're doing. Are the teachers buying in?
Oh, yeah.
So you're getting good cooperation?
Yeah.
Great.
No disgruntlement, no anything. Like I said, in those individual meetings, there was a lot of passion. And I mean that in the sincerest, like, they are passionate about their students.
Great.
Is the individual student data that's collected via a diagnostic tool or is that the iReady?
Well, iReady is our diagnostic, but then we also have the foundational skills, which is that SWOT assessment that I mentioned, you know. And then our benchmark is coming in November. We're going to be doing a benchmark on that. So we have various forms of assessment to get a complete picture of that.
Okay, so some of it, it's not all electronic-based then?
No, no. In fact, our SWOT is person-to-person.
When he talks about SWOT, it's a team of people that, these foundational skills, so you're going to have a piece of paper in front of you as a child, and you're going to be pointing and one-to-one correspondence. And the teacher would be timing and marking the ones that are correct and incorrect. Not done on the computer. The diagnostic, though, is done on the computer. We don't do that in kindergarten at the beginning of the year anyway.
Correct. Diagnostic is mid-year for kindergarten.
So as I think about this and the fact that we've only been really doing intensive data collection for a couple of years, my expectation is that the higher grade levels are probably somewhat less proficient because we haven't addressed this over the course of time. Is that what we're seeing?
That would be a fair statement to make. It's one of those building block theories.
Yeah.
You build from the bottom up.
And since we didn't for the longest time, we're now reversing that course and hopefully those proficiency levels.
Yeah, we had a major celebration last spring where we got a piece of data and it was actually formulated in a triangle where our base was truly the base. So we had a little celebration in the spring about that.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
You bet. Anything else?
I have one final question. You talked about the students that are below grade level and how we're working to get them. What about the students that show that they're above grade level?
We also have enrichment that happens as well. So we take care of that as well. We look on both ends of that spectrum.
Great. Very good report. Thank you. Very good. It's exciting.
Thanks, Mr. Humbert.
Okay. That's good. All right, so we are now at the public input portion, and there is no public input for this evening. So we will move to establishing the consent calendar for next week. I think we'll just go through it as normal.
Yeah, sure.
Actually, the human resources, I'll go through. Most of that is normal things. We'll have the approval minutes first. We do have one teacher that is up for tenure this year. We also have a general education aide that will be joining us. We have the substitute list that is updated with October's new, any changes to our substitute list. We are redesignating Riley Cox to a long-term substitute to cover for a leave. There's an interesting story there where Mrs. Bruce got wind that Riley was maybe considering education and had a conversation and kind of convinced them to substitute. And now here they are, taking on a little bit of a long-term position. So she's always out there, anybody that is half-interested, trying to get them in the door. And so we're excited to give Riley that opportunity. We do have a mentor for classified, Angela Shoemaker, with mentoring Abigail Carpenter. Some salary advancements for the list that's listed there for you. We have some game help folks that have joined us for October that are listed. A few coaching, not many, but a few coaching things that are listed. And I'll stop there before I get into the MOUs. Any questions on those?
Okay, move those to consent. Subject any opposition? Hearing none? Okay.
Okay. These MOUs have been a long time in coming. They were supposed to be done the fall after the CBA was approved. Our PSEA rep, who I really like and have a good relationship with, is overwhelmed, has some new responsibilities. And while she does a great job, it took a while to get these done. These are things that, some of them we wanted to be clarified or figured out. And then one was a clarification of something that we've done that was new. I'll start with the intermural rate one. Basically, we used to have an intermural rate. For whatever reason, we took it out of the CBA this time. I'm not really sure why we took it out of the CBA rate, out of the CBA this time. But that is for, we have the clubs that's part of the CBA and how much we pay this. This is for the thing that pops up in the middle of the year. Like, we had the crochet club a couple of years ago. It was only a couple of weeks. It's not a full-year club, and we don't have an avenue for that. And the only avenue to pay them then is the hourly rate. Well, the hourly rate at that point was $40 an hour. Well, that seems like a hefty amount of money to be paying for a crochet club after school, even though the kids enjoyed it. I think we had 10 or 12 kids participate in that. So this is bringing back the intermural rate, which is half of the normal hourly rate. So it allows us to do some of those things, but not pay the full hourly rate to teachers. The other one that we went round and round about is IEPs. The language in the current CBA basically says, talks about securing a substitute. Well, I'm going to tell you, there's a couple of problems with that. Number one, substitutes are not easy to find. Number two, we have some classrooms that frankly, an emotional support teacher, an autistic support teacher, we don't necessarily want to try to find them a substitute if they would rather be in the classroom, we'd rather do. There's always been an avenue to pay $25 per IEP, but the language said we were supposed to try and find a substitute first, or the principal was supposed to try to do that But those classrooms are very difficult. Plus, there was a humongous inequity. So in other words, if a teacher is pushing into a classroom most of the day with co-teaching or whatever, and they wind up being out, they don't have to write many lesson plans because that other teacher's probably going to take care of most of that and help whoever's in there for the day. But a teacher that is doing all the lessons in their classroom, then in order to be out, they have a ton of lesson plans to prepare for that substitute teacher. So this really just allows us to, it tweaks the language a little bit to take out the approval of Dr. Mastick Jones or myself to do the payment instead of finding the sub. It does allow teachers to take the sub if they want, but it gives us a little more flexibility and it gives a teacher a little more flexibility so we can match the needs of whatever that classroom is to how they're compensated for the IEPs. I know you had a chance to look at that. Any questions on that one? And then the final one, this came out of some brainstorming when we did the CBA, and it's really, it's coverage for when we can't find subs. And in the past, we'd throw them all in humongous study halls, if you remember those days. The coverage allows teachers to basically give up their planning time to go cover a class so that we can have someone in there for that class period. But doing that, we then pay them the prorated portion of what their hourly rate, which I think is $41 this year. You remember, it's probably 41 or 42, or whatever, the prorated for the amount of minutes that the planning has. It clarifies a few things in that. One of the questions we had that had come up was, okay, well, what if elementary, what if a teacher got sick and had to leave at 1:00 and we had to divide the kids up? Or are we paying each teacher to take three kids from that classroom across the board? The answer is now, it's clarified in there, no, that's not something we're going to compensate for. We appreciate everybody's help with it, but it's not, you're not covering an entire class for a period of time. So things like that were just tightened up. The language was made better. That was new, and I just think that you don't think through all the scenarios until you get into it. And we've been handling it that way since it was done. But now it's actually in writing. When we get to the next CBA, assuming we continue that practice, it'll just be a part of the CBA, and we'll get rid of the MOU at that point. So those are the three MOUs.
Okay, just to get into the technicals a little bit, Gary. So the terms of these MOUs were proposed by an LEA and discussed with admin? Is that how we got these terms?
No, it was a combination of, we had, the first one was proposed by us, the intermural rate. It was proposed by us so that we could run things at a lesser rate. The special ed actually came out of just a ton of discussion with different circumstances and trying to meet the needs of different teachers, plus having trouble finding coverage for some of the more difficult special education classrooms. That was a mutual discussion, okay, what's a good solution to this kind of thing? They got input from Kelly about it, and we had kind of gone back and forth a few times before we ironed out the language on that one. The coverage one, we kind of knew almost right away that first year, oh, boy, we didn't think about this scenario or this scenario or this scenario. Again, a mutual discussion. We met several times to, okay, what do we need to put in there to clarify some things so that there's no confusion? Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? If it's okay, I think I'd like to move this to discussion just because I think I want to take a little more detailed look this week. That's okay. All right? Okay. Yes, all three? Yep, okay.
Okay. Under budget and finance, the student activity account and cash disbursements, which are monthly items. Under instructional approvals, these were the curriculum that were listed in last month's meeting. They were under informational, that you've had a chance to take a look at. Those are all listed there for approval. I don't know if there were any questions about any of those or if anybody wanted to move those, any of them to discussion. Pretty straight.
I just, I was wondering if they were, I mean, the ones that I reviewed, are they written in the new format or the old format?
No, these were done last year. Yeah, they're still in the old format. Yeah. As they rewrite, as we revise, in the next time around, we'll get them into the new one. But they had started this before we had introduced the new one.
Yeah. Leave it on consent? Okay.
Every year, we participate in Reading Olympics. They give out, they provide a list to each district that's participating. We attempt to get the books for the kids so that they can read them and then be prepared for that competition. That list is there. The two textbooks for family consumer science that were, you remember, I had sent the online links to those. Those have been through the waiting period, and then those would be there to approve. The annual trip for our volunteer club to New York that they go and hand out donations in New York is listed for you there. We did this a couple of years ago for social studies where they kind of alternate and go to, in this case, Europe on years that we're not taking other big trips, and they're looking to go again in 2027. The IU-13 Intergovernmental Agreement that we do annually is listed for you there. That is just the services that are provided for Title I for IU. The Mental and Behavioral Health Services to share information, that agreement is also listed. These are agreements that we do each year, and also the agreement between us and the counseling services.
Eight point eight.
And then finally, there is a student agreement that was discussed in exec session several months ago that has been finalized now.
Okay. Any questions regarding items seven and eight? All of the sub-included items, or discussion? Any desire to move any of those to discussion? Okay, we will leave those on consent then. Okay.
Under information, just want to draw your attention. We did receive some library book donations for board policy. We did receive some library book donations for board policy. We accepted those and are notifying the board about the donations that were provided. And then there's some dates to remember, including Friday is the homecoming football game and Saturday is the homecoming dance.
Okay. Great. Any questions? Anything else for the good of the order this evening? Okay, if not, then with consent, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We'll see everybody Tuesday.